I'd like to call to order the city council study session of April 29th, 2021 at 3:05 PM at the Gig Harbor Civic Center. Due to public health concerns, this meeting will be held remotely. You may access the meeting by dialing 253-215-8782 and entering the media meeting ID number that we've listed on our website. With that, I'll call the meeting to order and do a roll call. Councilmember Abresol.
Here.
Councilmember Dinsen.
Here.
Councilmember Himes.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Woo.
Here.
I will acknowledge Councilmember Franch's name when he joins us shortly. And this is Mayor Kit Kuhn, a city administrator from staff, City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
Kelly is doing police training right now. Finance Director David Rodenbach.
Here.
HR Director Camille Borders.
Here.
ITS Director Keith Smith.
Here.
Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
I don't see Laura here. City Clerk Molly Townsley.
Here.
Assistant City Clerk, Open Government Administrator Josh Decker.
Here.
Jackie Claire Thomas.
Here.
Thank you. And let's see, I don't see anyone here that I have not called. If they're there and I don't see them, please speak now. Okay. And again, Josh or Molly, let Jim in when he is able to. Our agenda today is the first quarter budget status report, detailed discussion, because it does involve, you know, where we're at, at the first, end of the first quarter. You know, if we haven't made all of our marks as far as on plan, you know, why is that? And, you know, kind of moving forward. So with that, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Bob Larson. Again, I think it's, if I want to join in the meeting, I bet it's better to have someone else always, pretty much better to usually always have the city administrator run the meetings. So thank you, Bob.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. There was the council staff. I wanted to check in with council. I don't necessarily see a need to go over some of these items, obviously, that are on, on track for the objective or will be met within the budget. We've got 47 pages. I really wanted to get to the heart of the matter. There's two, obviously, major issues. And that is, obviously, we want to explain the staffing issues that are causing some of these things with our projects. And then I wanted to, obviously, didn't get into the projects themselves. But I wanted to invite Camille to first explain some of the information that was asked about on Monday night. I think that will give you some background and perspective as to where we're at right now. If everybody's okay with that, then I'll ask for Camille to open up, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, I'd just like to start off with our current recruitment status. We currently have 11 open positions posted on our website. We also have eight positions that are still in the beginning stages of working with the departments to update job descriptions, create interview question, establish a recruiting plan, things like that, before they go live on our website. So we're hoping to post those shortly as well. So there'll be 19 total positions we'll be actively recruiting for. Our goal is to fill positions as quickly as possible with the qualified candidates. I wanted to discuss today why there are so many open recruitments, why aren't people applying? And so I'm just going to give you a brief synopsis of those things as well. So, as you know, 2020, in the face of the pandemic, we saw several businesses in other jurisdictions laying off employees. And the city at that time was unclear of any potential budget impacts or overall financial resources. So it decided to hold off on hiring new positions or filling vacant positions at the time to ensure that we could preserve our current workforce. So the departments also were apprehensive, you know, honestly, about onboarding new employees during the middle of the pandemic, because we didn't know where this crisis was going and what was going to happen. So holding off seemed to be the best decision for us at that time. So kind of moving into why we're not seeing as many people apply right now, and this isn't just Gig Harbor focused. This is across the nation as well because of COVID. So we have individual reasons why we're seeing not as many people apply, but there's also a nationwide issue going on because of COVID, why people aren't applying. So first off, you know, unemployed candidates, people who are on unemployment, some of them aren't seeking jobs right now. And this is attributed to them receiving a greater benefit received with the COVID relief fund, or maybe they have a separation package from their previous employer. Also, people are having a hard time making the decision to leave the safety net of their current job. They already have a benefit that they're accrued, or maybe they already qualify for FMLA benefits. And if they move to different positions, they'd have to start over, and they'd have a new probationary period, they'd potentially have to move. And during this isolation period, it's hard to make new friends and have connections at work too with your coworkers. So there's several obstacles, you know, in trying to move this forward. And, you know, people are also considering their family decisions at this time, too. They're looking at, you know, is my child in full-time school? And a lot of schools aren't in full-time right now, so there's lack of daycares as well. And many families are using their leave benefits. So if they moved positions, that would be a more difficult situation for them. And of course, you know, people are experiencing great changes with tragic events in their life. And taking this leap to a new job right now is probably more scary than it's been before. So the security of having their current job is giving people pause for applying for new positions. One thing that I, that needs to be talked about, too, is the negative media coverage surrounding the city right now. It comes up in every job that we post. It's giving great pause for potential applicants. You know, we want to be the employer of choice. We want people to come here and feel welcome and feel like this is a good choice that they're making to move to Gig Harbor to work at our facilities. But we need to work on making a more positive, inclusive, diverse employee culture, and that starts with all of us. So I know that Bob is working on an action plan and is going to be bringing it back to council in May, probably late May, which will provide us with more guidance and direction moving forward with that.
I might add two things. One, Councilmember Franch, thank you for joining us. You're here, right? Just great. Okay. And my own two senses, we obviously had, you know, we can disagree, but it looks good for person, it looks good for potential employees if we, if, I don't want to say have to agree, but I want to say work together. And it goes a long ways when people look for a job, when they see us agreeing to disagree, but yet working together to accomplish the good for the community and the government.
Mayor, if I could ask you as a participant to please raise your hand, I want to make sure that I can acknowledge and respect the order of which the people are raising. Councilmember Abresol does have his hand up.
Thank you, and I will. Sorry.
Yeah, so I can wait till either Camille is done, or I can ask my question whenever she's ready.
You know, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate it if everyone waits, so I don't lose my train of thought, if that's okay with everybody.
I just wanted to put my hand up as a, to put it in order.
Thank you.
Thanks. So why aren't people staying? That's another question that we had to ask ourselves. Burnout across the country is high. Some departments are understaffed, as we can see by the open recruitments. And so those feelings of frustration and lack of support are there, because they're, they're doing all of the work, they're working extra hours. The work-life balance isn't where it was before. A lot of people are sacrificing their family time, they're sleep deprived. And they're doing this because they're loyal to the city and their coworkers. And if we continue down this path, it's going to be really hard for them to sustain it long-term. And it's, the burnout's going to be higher, and they might be looking for other positions. So I just want people to be aware of that, too. It's hard right now to carve out time to work on the nice-to-do things, because we're really focusing on the required, the statutory work items and work products. Employees are also experiencing, like I said earlier, like life-altering tragic events, and I can't go into the ins and outs of it. But, you know, we're not alone facing that right now. And there's a lot of people who are really facing issues that they would have to do. And they're doing it alone because of COVID's not making it easy for them to reach out to people and their friends and kind of deal with these situations as well. And so they're having to make decisions for the health of their family and their family units. And we're seeing people are retiring or talking about retiring earlier if they can too because of this. And so what are we going to do? How are we going to create momentum to increase the number of qualified applicants? We're partnering with organizations to help us assist with the recruitments. I do want to point out that Pierce County has a 6.8% unemployment rate right now. It was as high as 18.6% last year this time. So we are seeing a lower unemployment rate, still high, though. And so we're having, you know, a little hard time with that, too. We are partnering with WorkSource, both in Pierce County and Kitsap, because we're kind of like in the middle. And what we're doing with them is starting a hot jobs list. So that gets sent out to the individuals who are currently on unemployment in our region. We're doing virtual hiring events. We're doing publications with them to get the word out about our positions. We're working with college to the outreach programs. We're partnering with other agencies that's going to help us attract diverse applicant pool, like veterans and military spouses, individuals with disabilities that are qualified for these positions. We're reviewing the jobs and trying to identify, you know, transferable skills, any career path development that we can do to help us with succession planning. So we're also trying to increase our social media for recruitment, but recruitment's not only HR's duty, right? It's everyone. It starts and ends with all of us collectively. And we have to promote that the city's a great place to work. And I believe in our heart, we do, we do believe that. You know, we have phenomenal employees who love this community, and they give their all day in and day out. And I think that we have to promote that more. We can do a better job of acknowledging our employees' successes, both individually and collectively, and hopefully share that accomplishments and our stories via social media, so that other people will want to be attracted to come here as an employee. The other thing I know that we're going to be working on is to increase employee engagement. What that looks like involving employees more, communicating more frequently, raising awareness and increasing awareness, developing training opportunities for employees, you know, training's been difficult during COVID, but it still has to happen. We have to invest in our employees, you know, and recognizing their valuable contributions. Also, you know, we just want to make sure that we're creating a place where employees feel valued and feel belonged, and that they can contribute their unique skill sets and perspectives. So I think that's important for us to even celebrate when we go out trying to find people as well. On the horizon, I do want to let people, you know, everyone know here that we're currently, we currently have 34 employees who are between the ages of 55 and 75. So they may be, or they are possibly right now eligible for retirement. You know, it doesn't mean they're going to retire right away, but it does mean that we need to plan for it now, so that we won't be stuck in a similar situation moving forward in the future. And that could look like double filling positions to minimize the gaps. And so we can transfer the institutional knowledge, skills, and abilities over to the new employees or the current employees. And creating pipelines, so there is a way to train employees and support growth, possibly internships, or consider things like automatic progression into position, like we have an operator and training position potentially that goes to operator, and you'll hear more about that at another time. But things like that that are going to help us, so that we don't have these huge gaps, and we can still get our work done. And then just creating development and training opportunities, like a leadership or mentorship program. And those are the kind of ideas that we have moving forward. You know, these things take time and energy to develop, but if we invest in them now, it's really going to help us in the long run. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have, or any thoughts or concerns that you might have as well.
Thank you, Camille. Councilmember Abresol.
Yeah, so Camille, of the 19 positions that we're posting, are those all, I won't say full-time, but year-long positions, those aren't any of those temporary things or contractors that we hired out for?
Um, a couple of maybe temporary positions, but not all 19, no. I can look it up and get back to you on that. I think there's a couple, but not, the majority of them are not temporary positions.
Okay. And then I don't know how much of a film crew we have, but someone should go down there and film that police officer who's in the, doing the traffic work, because A, it's great just to watch him. I think it's been a huge success having him down there. And he's getting so many thank you's that he's got an automated response now when he goes through. And we should be filming that and trying to capture all those thank you's and everything like that, because I think the guy's almost getting roses thrown at him. So the city forget hiring him, and then I think that's a huge PR move right there.
I agree. We got to celebrate our successes more.
Yeah. And maybe, you know, if, I don't know if we have the people to do it, but if we have employees we know that love this place, film some of them with some testimonials and put them on the website.
Yeah. We reached out to employees and asked people to offer up to do that, too. So that's, that's great advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilmember Franch.
Not sure if anybody asked us in my absence, did, Camille, could you email me the list of 19 employees that are 19 vacancies?
Yeah, so that'll go out Friday. Everyone will have that in an email on Friday when we post the new position. So you'll see that going out to your email.
Okay. Councilmember Himes.
Yeah. Looking at just the positions I'm familiar with that have come forth as terms of vacancies, is there some sort of stratification here relative to skill level, management level, whatever, versus lesser skilled requirement jobs? And that, and along with that, have we considered, particularly on those higher-level positions, have we considered basically retaining a headhunter?
We have. We're actually working with several agencies, some that we're not paying, some that we are considering working with and paying. So it's a multi-tiered approach. We're not just posting and praying. You know, we're actually being active about how we're doing this and very strategic about the recruitments. We even are, we've kind of made like a hierarchical, what, which one do we need to fill first? So we've come together as a department heads and talked about, you know, what's really, really important, and focus our goals on those ones first. And then some of the low-hanging fruit, can we, can we have somebody else do that? Are these other positions that can wait, you know, a couple of months or maybe a couple of weeks longer? So we are prioritizing the recruitments as well.
Council, Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Bob. I just wanted to go follow up on Councilmember Abresol's comment about that police officer at the intersection of Harbor Houston. And I, I also believe that he's been doing a fabulous job. Just wanted to be clear, that is not a city employee. It's not a city police officer. That's one that the contractor hired. I believe he's out of Seattle. But yeah, he's been doing a great job.
We have to acknowledge or say that? Can't we let people's imagination run wild and just not correct them?
We can record it and then put the Gig Harbor patch over your shoulder, if it makes it look like it.
I think what the great story is, is that we were reflective as a city. People were commenting, why don't we have a flagger down there? And I think there was some talk saying, hey, we're not, we don't need to do it or anything. But then someone said, hey, you know what? Let's do it. And we did it quickly. And I think it's been a huge positive success.
Thank you. It had, fact has been, we've done a few other things, too, that most folks wouldn't notice, but we changed up the signs, reflected it's the downtown businesses that are open, a few other things that sometimes go unnoticed. But we're doing everything we can to facilitate that, that construction seamlessly. Mayor Kuhn.
Yeah, and thanks for recognizing that. We knew that people were upset, so we had to make a decision. It either took three flaggers by law or one police officer, which works out to the same amount of money. And we tried to get a city one first, but because of the training. So, you know, we, we worked to realize that it was worth the $6,000 for 10 days to help our community. I also want to note that, you know, when we do hires, it's not just like putting out one hire. When I, when I used to be involved in the hires, you know, we would have people drop out, you know, right, right when they would apply, you know. And we would have people that would take another job. So a lot of things happen when you started with five, and then by the time you got down to the interviews of the second round, you were down to two or something. So that happens a lot. Also, an example is the police officers. We've been trying to hire these police officers, and we had HR go through a lot of interviews to have police officers come forward. So they went through all that work, and then the officers went to our chief and went through around, and we were, and the chief was not, or the interview people were not, were not, they didn't feel the people that applied were to the caliber of what we wanted. So we're starting over again. So that's not our, that was our, our police department wanting what they felt was good for them. So, you know, it's, it's not that easy. That's a whole, that's a whole nother, now it has to go back to HR again, start all over again. So that happens. And again, it's not us. It's trying to get the caliber of people that our department, people in the interviews feel that they need.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. And as I mentioned at the top of the meeting, Councilmember Franch, for your benefit, I believe that it's not necessary to go through all of these objectives, but I'm certainly open to any counselor who wants to. I have a couple of comments, I'm sorry. Councilmember Woo. You're on mute. You're on mute, Jenny.
Yeah. So with regards to the police officers, what would happen if they interviewed with the police department first to make sure the caliber was there before they went further on with other departments in the city? Is that not a good way to do it, or have we thought about that?
That's, I'm sorry, but the mayor's comment was not exactly true 100%. So we have a process that we go through, and there is a, he didn't even, the last individuals did not even meet with the chief. They didn't make it through the beginning of the recruitment process. There were three individuals that didn't make it. So we're back to doing the PAT testing for the lateral position, and we're going to try to move forward from there. And we, you know, we know that there's a couple of upcoming retirements too, pending the next couple of years in the police department. And the chief and I have been talking about potentially trying to figure out a way, maybe we can get some entry-level applicants to ride with these, with the two people that are potentially retiring. So we can have, you know, the double filling of the position, so that we're ready, right when those people say, hey, here's our retirement paper we're leaving. We're prepared to take that next step, and we're fully staffed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Abresol.
I think Councilman Rodenberg was before me.
Oh, I've got you listed first. Is that, normally when you raise your hand, you don't go to the top of the list? If I'm mistaken, I apologize.
I'm always at the top of the list. His last name is Abresold, so.
I think, well, I'm going to ask City Clerk Molly Townsley to explain that.
As soon as you raise your hand, you go to the top of the list, and then it goes in, in order of when you raise your hand, so.
All right. So my question, I guess, was how many police officer interviews have they gone through? Is it a large number, a small number?
Well, we just recently went through three. We had three. And then we have two that are going to be doing a PAT test, potentially, the physical agility testing.
Right, because I mean, I've seen a couple of those folks up at the high school with the, or chief.
That's all. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I have two things. One is about raising your hand. We also have a council rule that nobody will speak twice before someone that hasn't spoken. So I don't know how that plays in with the hand raising. But my question is about the recruitment. The chief plays a part in recruiting the officers, and that's understandable. So in our normal process, Camille, how much of a part do the directors of particular departments play in hiring people? Do they get to interview them themselves and bless it, or?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for the question. That's great. Yeah, all of the directors who have individual vacancies in their department have the opportunity to interview all of the people that will be working in their department.
And can they then say no? Or do they, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's best fit, right? And so we interview, the questions are rated, and it's with the panel. And we're looking for the best qualified applicant for that position.
Councilmember Abresol.
Yes, are we advertising down in Lake Oregon and, and like Seattle, where people are looking to get out of those cities?
Yeah, for police officers especially. It's a national posting that we're working on. We do get a lot of out-of-state applications for the police officer positions, and also the higher level, some of the higher level ones, too. We go with national postings.
Director Langhelm.
Yeah, I just wanted to also mention that HR's been very helpful working at a few other specific groups, committees, kind of that are associated with engineering, for example. The American Public Works Association has a website that they've been using. And when we were recruiting for, we've been recruiting for the parks manager, quite a few candidates have come from outside of our state. Same thing with the wastewater treatment plant operator we interviewed, and the benefits of Zoom meetings are really showing themselves, because we are interviewing people from all around the country.
Thanks for that, Joe.
Very good. Mayor Kuhn.
Well, yeah, I might add with that, we are, we are work, we are going next week to proceed with the interviews for the park manager. I did want to let council know that right now, it's in the best interest of the city to have a separate park program run by a park manager. So the Capitol, Capitol Park projects are passionate among elected officials, a staff, and citizens, and our whole community. And they all work with various nonprofits and organizations that we partner with for many of those parks. So everyone helps create the parks, and it doesn't just happen in one department. Because of this, the projects are very involved and require countless hours from the park manager and supporting staff. So this has shown to be, is shown to be pretty much too much under, under another department. And so we feel it is worth trying to have a separate program on its own, and it just makes good business sense. So there will be little change as the park manager has no one directly reporting to them, but shares the support staff, and still will. They would just report to the city administrator. And this will not affect park maintenance, which will continue to fall under the public works. Now, this will allow the park work director, Jeff, to focus more on the wastewater treatment plant, public works shop operations, and other Capitol Street projects without all the park capital projects under them as well. So we've discussed this with, with Jeff, and he's very supportive of helping to, it's going to take, you know, he's, he's passionate and very interested in all that he's worked so hard, as we all have, on many of these park projects. So when we do, hopefully, in the next two or three weeks, when we get a park manager, Jeff will work with that person to be able to give that transition over to them, but it will take some time.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Abresol.
Yeah, so I guess my question would be to both you, Bob, and Keith, since you are, I think, our newest recent hires that are here. How is the housing market and affordability of homes here in the area? How much of an effect of a decision that that make on you folks when you were moving here? And are we, you know, is it too expensive to find a home or an affordable home that allows you to work here in Gig Harbor?
I will respond first. The, it's very expensive, and I'll call, closer you get to the harbor. And I could even ask for one of our real estate folks at the council to give us some more perspective. But there's, there's a very diminished supply for inventory that continues. And so I ended up having to move just outside the city limits. I just couldn't find a house or a home that we could, I felt, would be reasonably priced, given the, but Gig Harbor is a very attractive area. And the radius, near the center of the harbor, as you go further you go out, you're most likely to find, I'll call more affordable homes, but we have several positions that. positions that the folks should be coming here that we find it very difficult to be able to move here under the circumstances, especially not called, if it is a school district generally. But you'd have to go further north or, or across the bridge into Tacoma or further south in order to find a, a more affordable housing, given the market conditions. And it's, it's very, very extreme right now. I don't think it's changed at all, in my opinion.
Was that a factor? Cause I was just kind of shooting from the hip there on that question, but play into the decision-making process?
Not for me, but given my position, I had a little bit more flexibility. There might be others who might feel differently, but I could certainly ask Keith if you wanted to respond.
Yeah, I mean, I'd echo what Bob said. But with the exception of, I think I just got lucky. And I, I'm one of the few that I think actually live in city limits, but I can't say that I have like, you know, two great employees that are temporary and they're doing a good job, but they're having an extremely tough time trying to find housing within city limits because they, they would love to, you know, live here. And, you know, one of them is actually, you know, was born and raised here. He just went off and, you know, went off to college and now he's coming back. So, and he's kind of finding, you know, extremely difficult to find some place to live here. So. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Counselor Rodenberg.
Yeah, I just, again, I have a couple of things. Keith, you said you had two temporary people. Were those hires during the COVID?
Yeah, they were pretty recent, within the past month or two.
Okay, then the other question I have is back on the, the park spanner. And I just want to understand what the mayor said a little bit better. Mayor, are you saying now that the park spanner will not be in public works? And they'll report to Bob? And if that's, if I understood that correct, who does the admin for park spanner? Where is that? Just the administration for parks managers. Who does that? If he's going to change department?
I'll let Jeff be the best one to answer that.
Right now in the structure we've had in the past, the parks manager receives administrative support from three different public works administrative staff, Terry Garrison, Maureen Whitaker and Denise Shar.
But my question was going, going forward, who will do that for, for that person?
Same people.
The same people?
Yeah.
The parks manager then interfaces most with public works?
I think Jeff answered. My perspective is that it also interfaces quite a bit with the planning department or excuse me, community development on, on some issues as well. And then obviously with, with the maintenance staff, getting things done on the field. Jeff, go ahead. I, I get more detail about that.
Sure. My estimate is roughly, just looking at the, the departments that parks manager works with the most is probably two thirds of their time is interfacing with, well, interfacing with public works, both engineering and operations and about one third, community development. But there's also a fraction of time in there that there's direct relationships and conversations with lessies of city facilities and so that's more of an administrative function.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me get back here. I'm off mute. Counselor Jensen, sorry about that.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a question about the parks manager position too, because Jeff has overseen that position and that whole department for so long and certainly knows so much about what's in the pipeline for parks and new parks and ideas for parks in the future. Will Mr. Langham be involved still at least in interviewing these folks? Because I think that would be really helpful for the institutional knowledge.
I would say absolutely yes, emphatically yes. He is going to be on the interview panel. He's been on the interview panel. Much appreciated too, so.
We talked the other day, you know, this, whoever the park manager is, it's, it's key to have Jeff. What, even if it was under public works, it's key to have Jeff involved. So, you know, he's known that it's been, as he, as he told me, it's been a burden and a passion and a passion at the same time, you know, and a joy. So, cause it's a lot. It's, we don't have six parks anymore. We don't have seven. We have 22 and a lot of these parks come with agreements with special organizations too. And he's probably taken about, even though he's been doing this, he, even falling under it, it takes a huge amount of his time. And that's why, that's why we're not choosing to, to take it to planning or anything. It's not, it has nothing to do with it really under public works or because, you know, we would move it to another department. If it has to do with, it's just too much to be tied to something else that takes so much staff. And they, again, they don't have anyone directly report. So yes, it's going to, and maybe Jeff ends up being the engineer that they have, that that park manager wants to work with. You know, so he's still going to be involved even after the transition. So, but it's going to take, you know, it, it was very important to have his support because it's going to take him supportive of this to make the transition to help this person out. So again, he'll be involved with it as long as he wants to be.
Very good. Great discussion. Before I jump into the, the the report, I wanted to acknowledge, obviously, everyone who's contributed to that, including the folks you've got here in front of you, the staff, as well as others who've supported those staff members, but also in particular Josh Stecker. He, he compiled all this information and figured out how to put it into a readable report. And I'm quite impressed and I want to acknowledge him and thank him for his effort. And with that, I, I've been thinking on the fly here a little bit, but I would suggest we could just start with, with this page two of 47. And if you're okay with this, I'll just ask if anybody's got any, any comments about anything on that particular page. If you don't, then we can quickly proceed to the next page or we can stop and chat about any item on there. If that's okay with, with the council and the mayor, we can try to facilitate that way. Counselor Franch.
Yeah, I'm, I'm got 55 pages. So what, what, what's the page? That you're starting with?
I'm, I'm starting on, it's, it's the budget Q1 statutory report. It starts page one of 47. The document in front of that was just your quarterly financial report that if you have any questions, we can certainly go into that. I, I didn't expect that. But I, go ahead, Molly.
So you're talking about you're starting with this one?
Yes. So look at the page numbers down at the bottom right, rather than the header on the upper right. Look down at the bottom.
Thank you, Molly. I, I was looking at the lower right and not at the other one. So I appreciate that, the clarification. All right, Mayor Keon.
Yeah, one last thing on recruitment. It, it has been, you know, you're right on the, on the housing market and even the crisis. So I, there's a lot of, we, we had an officer two years ago that, that joined the force and then he couldn't find a house in his price range. So he left. That was two years ago. The houses have gone up tremendous amount of, you know, Port Orchard is, is expensive. So Tacoma is expensive. So housing does play a part. I also want to mention, we, we had two employees within the last year that moved here and we hired them under COVID. And then they went back to their hometown because they could not meet anyone. They felt very much alone because they couldn't go out and meet people. I mean, I know Bob's, Bob's been frustrated himself that, you know, he, he got three months with you and then, then everyone went home. So it's been very hard for Councilmember Robert Laus, but it's, again, we lost two people in the last year because they felt homesick because they couldn't meet anyone here under COVID. And think about it, they moved here from a different state and now they can't meet anyone. So they, they went home and got back to the job that they took. So it, COVID has not been a friend to us. I'll just say that.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. By the way, I'm still waiting on those dinner invitations I got last year from everyone. So whenever you want to take me up on it. All right. I'm going to start with, on the lower right corner, page two of 47. It's the first objective is non-departmental and the first one is legislative. But that page, if anybody's got any questions, we can stop and discuss. Otherwise, if I don't see anybody raise their hand, I'm going to proceed to the next page. All right. Please flip it over to page three. That's just a continuation. Again, everything's on track and under budget. Right. Page four is the municipal court. I do want to comment there. We are still working with municipal courts. It's more of a, it would be a larger project with, with the council chambers in and of itself. We're going to have to make some major modifications going forward for the, for us to be having in-person court sessions and our in-person meetings, including council meetings. And we're still working on this and we're still trying to get some, some clarity. But it's going to require us to upgrade our, our video and audio equipment. I'll just say that now, but again, we'll try to get some more, more details as we continue the process. Next page is five. It's the administration. Got, starts out with policy procedures. Again, those are, are all on track. The next page is page six. Those are also on track. Next page is city clerk. Oh, go ahead, Jenny. I'm sorry, Counselor Woo.
Yes, on page six. So, so there is a downtown promoter and attract new businesses while maintaining its residential charm. So that is apparently not on track.
Yes, you're correct. Thank you.
And, and that's, that is due to staffing? Is that our staffing or is that like the waterfront association staffing or?
It's, no, it's primarily, we would be assisting if we could, but primarily because we're having, they're having a difficult time just maintaining the businesses that are in town. And so we're working on that, but we need to come out of COVID for some of that. There, there generally are businesses that fill this space, but they're Mary Damaris from Waterfront Alliance would, would tell anybody who wants to listen that they're having a heck of a time with the businesses trying to hang on. And so we'll do everything we can to come out of COVID. It's, it's a natural attraction, the, the downtown, but obviously just, it's going to require more attention and we're going to need to help lift, lift that boat, if you will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Franch, ah, Heinz, excuse me.
Yeah, I had a question relative to alignment of things. Capital Improvement Plan is an excellent example. This, this is following what I call the finance model where you allocate out of the same department, heads all over the place. And basically that's Jeff Langham's shop called, you, you, you see a little bit here, you see a little bit there, you see a little bit off the wall, but you never see the real thing to the bottom line. It says, hey, those engineers are coming from the same source and there's only so many of them. And all we see is these individual projects spread out all, I'll cross all these different categories. Okay? I, I guess I'd like to see in the worst way called, when you put it back together and say, yeah, but they're all coming from the same source. What does that look like?
It's a good point.
I'm convinced that's, that's the critical skill right now that we're missing.
Right. The, the reason it was kept here under general, under general fund administration is because that's where it was placed in the budget and we need to pull it out of there and consolidate. And that's, but we just wanted to show the flow so that it wouldn't be confusing to anyone as you went through the document, they were comparing it to the budget itself. These were literally taking page by page out of the budget. Counselor Abersold.
Yeah, I guess my question is, are there any materials or products that the city uses that have prices that have jumped up, like the wood price? Or is there any kind of limitations on materials? I know with the school district, they can't order things the way they used to. They used to be able to fill out a request and carte blanche, they got what they want by the manufacturers. Now the manufacturers are saying you can only get limited supplies of this and can't have all the things you wanted before. Is anything like that affecting us?
I'm going to ask for, may I see council or public works director Langham nodding his head. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, there, there are, I mean, of course, there are the prices that are the prices and we have to pay those significantly increasing in building construction materials. There are items that are out there that used to be, you know, lead item, lead times of a few weeks a month, but are now many, many weeks, many months. One of those, and we alluded to it when we've been talking about Gig Harbor North, crosswalks and, and roundabouts, the rapid flashing, rapid rectangular flashing beacons, RFPs. Those are many months out now. The, those are one of the few items that are going to be outstanding for the Rosedale Stinson Corridor project. We have, Trent told me that just this week, we placed our order for all of the RFPs for the Gig Harbor North. We placed them independent of a contractor because we know those are long lead items and we, we're going to buy them. We think that they'll be here in time to meet our deadline, but those exist and we're trying to be very aware of those. I, I, I'm not going to say that there's any, we're not changing any of our projects based off of either high materials prices or long lead times. Because much of the materials that we use for our, our projects are not those building materials. Most of them are the concretes, pipes, asphalt, those types of materials that aren't, that aren't seeing the same five, six, eight, tenfold increase in prices. So. But we're, we're aware of them. We're trying to account for them, but it's not necessarily changing how our approach is or adjusting the scope of the project.
Thank you. All right. I'm on, going on to page seven of 47, the city clerk. Molly's got everything. Fine order there, her and Josh. Okay, now we're on to page eight and identifying employee training. It's under human resources. Camille, you have a. She's indicating, you're on mute. She's indicating her 10% complete. Go ahead, Camille, if you want to. You're on mute.
Trying to find the page. Hold on one second.
Okay, page eight.
Okay, thanks.
There's, there's obviously an explanation there in great detail, if that helps, counsel.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I know. I'm following along. Sorry about that. So, yeah, we have a high volume of workload in HR right now. I know that a lot of you know that Melissa is no longer with us and we've hired temporarily Aaron as the HR analyst to assist us with some other items in the HR department. And training has not been a priority for us because we're still just trying to do the required items that we need to do for the city. But it is something that we have to do to help our employees learn and grow. And so I will be, hopefully this coming budget season, proposing a training and development coordinator or specialist type position that can help with citywide training and compliance. And this is going to be needed long-term for even just the safety manage, helping manage a safety committee and any safety needs that we're dealing with long-term for our employees and just making sure we have a safe environment. Everyone has appropriate training they need and we're developing our employees. So I will be bringing this back up to you later, but that is why, right now, we just, we, we're focusing on the, the hot irons in the fire right now and we don't really have a lot of time to focus on the development piece of our employees.
Thank you. Counselor Franch.
I'm just wondering, and it's kind of a running theme throughout this 47 pages. A lot of the objectives will be met under budget. If, if the, if it's not a yes or no, is it that there, wasn't a dollar amount attributed to it?
I would think generally yes.
Well, I'm assuming the employee training probably did have some money associated with it.
Yeah, that's, I think why I said I, objective on track to meet in 2021. We're only at 10%, so we're not on track. We're over a quarter into the year. We're behind on helping people get training.
Right. Well, I, I mean, my question will, will it be met under budget? So that and, and the, the one below, performance evaluation, it's the same thing. But I'm assuming under the performance evaluations that that was just an internal thing. So it didn't have a cost associated with, so I'm, I'm assuming that's why there's no yes or no box checked.
Right, because we don't know. For the performance evaluation. Right, because we don't know. For the performance evaluation, I don't think there was a budget item for that or the employee training. I don't think it was listed in your guys' budget as an item.
So Bob, is that so I don't have to ask the question every time this comes up where there's the that section is left unmarked that if when there is nothing marked yes or no under objective will be met under budget that it just had no dollar amount associated with it.
That's correct. It would be primarily just labor costs. And then obviously, individual departments and programs have have training budgets, if you will. And education perhaps, but those would be individually listed under the departments themselves. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, on the next page, it does say training expenses. But there's sixteen different classes there offered by EAP. So my question is, are those just kind of online and they're available to employees? They can do it if they want. They just so it's not anything we take in a niche step. And if that's true, why is it costing us $5,000? And do we know if some of the ones that have been held already? Do we know what the participation rate was?
Right. So those did not cost us $5,000. This was so the training expenses listed on page nine, it's a citywide training activities such as an all-staff training. We were budgeting that to have like one day in October to come together as a staff for all of our staff members to be trained collectively, possibly have one person trained with breakout groups. So that was kind of in planning for the last couple of years, but we were just unable to do last year and potentially this year because of COVID. So that's what the $5,000 was for originally. The training listed below, I just wanted to give everyone an idea of what kind of training that we're offering right now. We sent a survey out to more employees and asked them what it what interested them. And so these were, I think, $100 apiece or less. I can't remember right off the top of my head, but these were trainings that the employees requested.
And do we know the participation rates for the ones that have been held already?
So we don't have that kind of data, but they are able to access the training at any time. So once the training was available, people can log in on their own to review the training at a later date. So it's still available for them.
And Camille, when you mentioned $100, that's for each of these these portals, if you will. It wasn't for for employee. It was just for the having.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we did get some for free, so I don't I don't have the exact cost.
It was part of the employee assistance program, correct?
Right. Yeah, it's part of our EAP.
Thank you. Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, just a general question on the training thing. Do we have a tuition refund program here?
We have a tuition reimbursement program. We are currently working on a policy for that.
Because we Okay, because we back in my prior life, we used to use that quite a bit successfully, I may add, where we hired CAD designers, but with the full intention and giving them the opportunity to train over the next few years in night school or late in the afternoon, as the case may be, to become engineers. And it was kind of an aspirational type program called you come in at this level and if you got the oomph, go for it, partner, we'll sponsor you all the way. And it worked very effectively. They became familiar with the organization. They became familiar with the procedures, but technically they were pretty sharp, too. Anyway, just a suggestion.
Thank you. I'm going to now go through the next grouping, which is page eleven, Information Technology Services. He's done quite a bit of work with the staff over the last several months.
About.
Councilmember Franch, go ahead.
Yeah, just before you get too far away, yeah, I I think that you know, helping people with their tuition is a good idea, but I think there needs to be also a time put in place where I don't really think that it's proper for the city to be reimbursing somebody for tuition. Unless they're going to be here for a while. So I don't want to pay somebody's tuition. Say several thousand dollars and next year they leave. So I I Camille was talking about you're working on some policies for that. So I I think it would be responsible to have in those policies some sort of timeframe in there where if they leave the city within a certain timeframe, they need to pay back those reimbursed funds.
I think our current policy or directive, it does say something similar to that already. And also that it has to be directly related to their position and the field that they're working in. So there are some parameters. We just need to tighten them up a little bit. We we got some feedback from our state auditor, and so we want to make sure that we're in compliance with them as well.
Very good. All right, page eleven, Information Technology Services, city. Any comments or questions about that? Okay. Next page is page twelve. We got finance. Okay. We're on to page thirteen, who's the police. Kelly sends his apologies. He is obviously in training with his folks. He needs to be there. But if there are any questions, I can certainly make sure they get recorded and we can get the answers if we're not able to answer from here. Okay. Moving on, I'm up to page sixteen, which is the planning. Again, I'm also on behalf of Katrina. She sends her apologies. She's she's been under the weather this afternoon. She wanted to be here badly, as you can imagine, but I explained to her that we would try to cover for her. If we are not able to answer all the questions councils have to have any, that we would obviously jot those down and get you some responses promptly. To do note that on page seventeen, housing attainability. That one is marked as a it's not on track to be met in 2021. And this is due to the other priority items that have been outlined by the council and the mayor. She's saying it may not be completed, and she says she will keep the mayor and council informed as we move along. On to page, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, just to clarify, when it says due to other priorities, does that mean that if we had staff, then we would get it done? Is that?
I will suggest, in talking to Katrina, that if we had, we had, yes, we had all the positions filled and we had started out the year that way, that we would be much closer to attaining this thing, or at least being on perhaps on track, yes.
Yeah, some of the other reasons that were listed actually said staff, but when it says priorities, the 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 crux of it is if there was staff, it would fit within the priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going on to page eighteen, the design manual review at the bottom of the page. Same explanation due to other priorities are trying to get done here. So they're going to keep the she'll keep the mayor and council informed. And then next one as well, development regulation update. Just so you're aware, Katrina, in talking with the mayor and I, she explained that that we we needed to let something go for the time being, obviously, and get on to the what she thought were margin matters and higher priorities for the council and the mayor. So that's what she's done here to reflect that. Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, just a positive note here. I thought some of the numbers on page eighteen were ahead of the game called it was rare in this report, but there was some seventy-five percent completion, sixty percent completion on some critical items, particularly the buildable lands report and growth allocation. So I know Katrina's not here right now, but that's definitely one attagirl. Anytime you get ahead of the head of the curve like that. And you're not playing catch up the rest of the year. Good things generally emanate from that.
Right. There's also might indicate a a higher priority if you get it done earlier in the year because of other things going on at the at the county or the or the regional level as well. But thank you for that comment. Councilmember Franch.
So the under this on page nineteen, the development regulation updates.
Yes.
Are we working on any of those or they're all just too low of a priority?
She's got her the she's two planners down right now. So yes, they're they're having to work on all current planning issues. These are considered more more long range. And that's the that's the reason behind most of that. She doesn't want to get back to it.
She mentioned that, you know, long range might have to be pushed a little bit to deal with the things that we're wanting to do immediately until we get those positions filled.
Right. Well, you know, you know, we've been talking about tree retention policies for three years. And I know that, Mayor, I believe that's something that you're.
It matters to me a lot.
Exactly. So, I mean, are we anywhere on that particular issue from where we were three years ago?
We'll most likely have to consider retaining a third-party arborist as she's indicated here at that last line.
Yeah, but that's that's a little bit different than a policy about tree retention.
I understand.
I hope to get. I hope when we get some of these positions filled, that that's to me, I'd even take the I'd personally, I'd even rather take the Masonic Temple off the list and work on tree retention. With the third part with the arborist that double checks the developers. So it's very important. We haven't got to it, but I really hope in the next six months we do. And that's how that's how important it is to me.
Absolutely. And, you know, I I would urge all the council to take a drive down Shirley Avenue and see what happened with Rosedale Village, that second phase. There's trees that that from my estimation, we're in the right way, and I'm talking about big trees that were taken out. And that is, I'm telling you, somebody that lives anytime these tree stands go out and I'm sure Councilmember Markley knows when they took the trees down on the other side of Burnham Drive, you start hearing a lot more noise from the freeway. So all these stands of trees. I mean, this is just really something important. So I guess maybe I'll follow up with Katrina and and see what are at because I know I know that you are passionate about this, Mayor. So I don't think this is something we should let fall through the cracks for another year.
No, I think when we get those, when we are able to backfill some of planning, then we can work on it this year.
Yeah, we we are fully and I just make I'll make a comment now about it, but I think we've mentioned it before to counsel. We have not had one developer. In fact, we're getting more in the pipeline for private development. And so we're really at at our peak, if you will, trying to get these things as private development. We have statutory requirements to address those. We can't just let those go. We can't delay those. We have to respond at a certain number of days for these applications. And I understand there's more coming in the pipeline. So it's continuing unabated. And so we're trying feverishly to 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 obviously mean at least sustain the our plan reviews and the things that go with that. But we we're we need to get those planners and we need to make sure we get back on top of as much as we possibly can. So we don't delay anybody's project. And then we'll get to the other things as well. Are listed here. All right, I'm going to go on to page twenty. It's the building and fire safety. You'll note that some of those things are are on track or actually more than fifty percent completed, in some cases completed in its entirety. So. Page twenty-two, parks operating. Got the first three items, skate park security cameras. We did not receive a grant for that. That's why we are not Jeff, do you have any comments about that? Can we still get this done within the budget cycle?
We can. I think Molly said there might be other opportunities later in the year, so we'll keep our eyes out for that, or we can just take city funds and pay for it ourselves.
Okay. The next two items, because of some of the deficiencies in staffing levels, we may have to put off in 2021, both the park asset reservation software and the recycling program. The Councilmember Franch and then Councilmember Woo.
So, yeah, on page twenty-two of forty-fourty-seven, the park asset reservation software. Is that the system that was supposed to be used for the kayak building? Or is that going to be a different? Where are we at on because, you know, next year, 2022, I'm assuming, you know, we're going to have people that are going to be wanting to rent space in there.
Well, the park asset reservation software was for all park assets. It included the boats rental facilities inside the boat storage building. And for things like the ball field at Crescent Creek and the pavilion at Crescent Creek. We actually are in the process and had a meeting right before this one to talk about how we're going to receive payments from people who are going to be storing their human powered craft in the Antic Boat Storage Building. Please remember, we're on track to have the community paddler stock constructed and open to the public this fall. So that means we need to have the human powered craft storage and all this park asset reservation software. Or at least some some form of it and a way to receive the billing in place this fall. And we might not get to the park asset reservation software, but we're going to try and find a way to make it work in in between now and then. We're at the Parks Commission now. It's going to come to Public Works Committee at their, I believe, the May the eleventh meeting. So anyway, that that not the park asset reservation, but just more about boat storage building in. But it's going to be there's going to be a gap if we're not able to get this done.
Right. Well, I, you know, as far as, I mean, we're we've been able to rent out Scansy Park, the ball fields with whatever system we have, but the boat, the kayak storage building, that's something new. So I guess we'll talk about it next month.
Very good. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, on the recycling program, there has been some email traveling around between Ben Coronado, the chair of the Parks Commission, and Lindsay at Harbor Wild Watch. Can they work together or are we are we needing some guidance from the staff, the city staff on this? Are we waiting for the new parks manager is set here so we can't do anything about this until we get the parks manager on board? Is that what this means?
What what the recycling program that was outlined here is is more than the pilot program that Lindsay Stover suggested and Ben Coronado was proposing. A pilot program just to see if an outreach and education of the public is successful is one thing, but this recycling program is to set up with our garbage collector a way to successfully create or collect recyclables that are not contaminated and have those put into separate bins and collected by our waste collector. So I I think we can we can probably work with Lindsay and the Parks Commission to put out a pilot program. It would probably give us some good information. But it's not going to be an all out across the city recycling program that we have.
Right, right. My understanding was just going to be maybe one or two places to try to educate the public so that everybody puts what's needed and what's barrel in the in Scansy to get try to get this education going on. So, okay, and this whole other thing is a different thing. It sounds like really the $8,000.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Franch.
So this, the the item number three on page twenty-two, that is a residential recycling program?
No, it's a recycling program for it didn't. I guess it doesn't say that, but it's within city facilities. Public spaces.
So city property generally.
Yeah, but the the current waste collector already has a recycling program for city residents, residential level.
Right.
Now, all right, I won't take up any time on this, but.
Yeah, and you know, I private entities can do a lot of these things a lot easier. So these get very complicated when they're, you know, like I just reviewed the fifteen pages of Adopt a Park that the Park Commission, Jeff and Terry worked on, and it's really good, but it's fifteen pages of Adopt a Park cleanup. And it's it's involved. I mean, that's it's you have to watch all these details. And so, you know, I I believe, I'm not sure, but like eight years ago, they tried to recycle and then people were just throwing all sorts of stuff in it and it didn't work. And so you have to work on something with wastewater management. And so you have to work on something with wastewater management, uh, to make it so that you know where it's going to go. So. You, some of these things in, in the software also, you know, the, and the boat shop is working on, on some software. For the, the house that we're going to be sharing renting. So maybe we can use some type of software on like that. So. We are working on the software and in some different avenues of with people and, but some of the things are, are very tricky to do when. When we don't have a wastewater management recycling at the same time and, and people just throwing trash, you know, in, in a, a place too.
Very good. Thank you. I'm on to page 23, the flip side of the parks operating. Uh, things seem to be, uh, well in hand there. In fact, they're not completed. They're very close to being completed. I'm going to go on to page 24 and the Arts Commission. And, uh. Some of these have started to be addressed. Do you have any questions? Any Molly help answer these? They seem to be, uh. On track and or will be met under budget. Okay, that's including page 25 of Councilor Franch. Go ahead.
So yeah, on page 24, uh, the Gig Harbor Arts and Cultural Planning. How much of that, how much staff time is that taking? Of, 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 um, Katrina's. Folks.
From what I understand, this is who the consultant was to be hired.
Not for $250, I don't believe.
Uh, even though the price is there, I, I think it's what it was in-house. So I have a feeling like this, this changed because, um. People, we, people still wanted to do it, but we can't do it without getting a consultant. So. Yeah, I think it's, it's on track to get a consultant, but the price wasn't updated.
Okay, well.
Oh, this is the creative districts, Jim. This is something totally different. This is something that the Arts Commission started a year ago, having small open houses. And the $250 was just to have cookies and punch to invite the community, but we. You know, because of COVID, haven't been able to do it. But it was just to discuss creative districts.
The, the manpower, the, the, the person power.
Favor.
That's involved with this is mostly the Arts Commission members.
Yes. All I did is bought cookies and water.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, page 25, uh. Any comments there? Questions? That's the rest of the arts stuff. On to page 26, uh, city buildings. I want to point out, we, we're working on item two. And item three, as we speak, uh, I'll have Jeff, uh, comment on those generally.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilor Woo first though.
No, I, I'm just waiting to hear about item two. So I'm glad that he's going to talk about it. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, item two, replacement of the building and access control system. Uh, we just met yesterday, I believe it was, uh, talking about options. Uh, the initial proposal spent $25,000. Uh, on individual building access control, uh, became, was becoming a logistical challenge because one person or. It took, uh, one staff member to go around and adjust codes whenever we, uh, hired a new employee or, uh, no, no, no. An existing employee resigned, uh, to go and change all of our door locks individually. And, uh, so we looked at, we're looking at other options that more closely. Relay what we have today, which is essentially networked, uh, access control system, uh, with, uh, proximity card readers. Included within our city badges. And, um. That's the option we're looking at that is going to be significantly more expensive, but we can change it cloud based on the fly. And one change at a click of a button in the network will affect and provide access or deny access. To the civic center, to the operations center, to the wastewater treatment plant all at once, instead of having to have one staff member go around. And so you can imagine how many staff hours that would do, take in the potential errors that could happen. Or if you don't get all of the door locks to be adjusted when we hire a new one or a new person or, uh, one person resigns. So. A long way to describe, describe that we think we have a much better idea that's going to save us money in the long run, but it's going to cost us more money upfront.
Councilor Franch.
What kind of money, Jeff?
Uh, we're still trying to find that out, but it, it's probably in the three to four times that amount there.
Are the cards that we have right now? Do those, if I came up to City Hall tonight, wanted to get in and get on the computer, copy something off, would my card still work?
Your card would still work. You would have to check in with our COVID procedures, but your card would still work.
Okay.
But, but I, that said, that system is, uh. On, on the edge of failing any day. And I know Molly probably every day. Size of relief, has a sigh of relief when she swipes her card through and the door actually opens. Um, I know Keith has been working with us, uh, on this one for sure. And he has been giving me the same, uh, sentiment that if this goes down, we're done. We're going to, everybody's going to get brass keys until we get it fixed.
Yeah.
That's just a secret knock.
There you go.
And Jeff, why don't you go ahead and on number three as well, just explain roughly where we're at with the, uh, with the visitor center at both.
Sure. Um, th- this project is something we've looked at, uh, both the, for the re-roof and re-insulate, uh, break. But we're also taking into account as, uh. Bob Larson had suggested to look at the HVAC system, since the HVAC system is also very old in this building and it, uh, might, uh, interact with the, uh. Or be good timing to replace at the same time we're doing re-roofing and re-insulating. So we've got some prices on that. Right now, the HVAC system is operational. Right now, the roof is, is just fine. It's not leaking. It just needs to be replaced. We have it on our horizon as, uh. Something that needs attention soon. We are going to get into summer with the staffing levels we currently have. We're looking to possibly hold this off completely until next year, if we can make that happen.
Thank you. Councilor Franch.
So when are you, because it says it's objective to, on track to be met in 2021. So when will you know that?
Um, we'll have a better idea, uh, probably by early summer, late spring, early summer. Depends on how much staff we're able to, uh, get on boarded by then. I can guarantee you by the time we get into budget discussions later this year, we'll have a idea of whether we can complete this in 2021 or not.
Was 50,000, is that what we set aside in the, uh, 2021 budget for that re-roof?
Re-roof and re-insulating. When we re-roof it by code, we have to re-insulate it. Because of the style of installation, roofing this there.
Thanks.
Very good. On to page 27. Again, this is operating for the street division. This would be, uh, Jeff's, any questions on these? Councilor Johnson.
I don't have any questions, but I was disappointed to see this on the list being cut just because I know it's a long-term project and it's something that. We need for looking forward and making sure we're making the best decisions on design and streetscapes and all of that. But just wanted to say that.
Which particular area are you referring to? Item. On page 27.
Sorry, I was referring to number four, Public Works Standards Update.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Councilor Franch.
Uh, item number three.
Yes, so again, this project was supposed to be designed in-house, uh, by our associate engineer who is no longer with the city. Um, we had talked about having our on-call consultant take over this project. But, um, even with the on-call consultant taking over the project, there's still a significant amount of administrative time, construction, supervision. Time that would, uh, go into this. And, um. So we were looking at projects that based on the staffing levels we have, that we could hold off until 2022. And so, and also we should have had this project out to bid by now so that we can get the best prices. So. If we were to try and finish this project in through design and get it out to bid, we would be putting this project out to bid in July, which is probably the highest time. Or the time when we would see the highest bid amounts. So right now, we're looking to suspend this and restart in for the 2022 budget.
Yeah, well, I, I think that that's a great idea. So the, the, the box marked objective on track to be met in 2021, that's probably going to change.
It's probably going to change. Yeah, it's in, in it, it's on, we're, we're completing design now and we're probably. 50% or more through design. It's just, uh, in order for us to get through it and have a cost-effective project, we're, and staffing, uh, availability, we're going to. We're asked to just be pushed off into 2022.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. There's no, I mean, I don't believe that any of those roadways. Are going to deteriorate in the next year. Uh, the pavement rating number is probably not going to change that much. So. Thank you.
Very good. Eric Kuhn.
Yeah, I, I'd like to thank you for understanding that. Um, you know, when we did the budget last July, uh, we did. Express to council how we, we really probably couldn't get all these projects done. That was before we even knew that COVID was going to go, the crisis was going to go so long. And we, we paused, I paused hoping some, some council would understand that and take some projects off. Uh, they did not. Um, so we kept projects in the budget. Now we're a whole nother year still into a crisis. Um. You know, as, as we, I don't know if everyone's been following the numbers, but we're, we're working really hard, uh, not to go back to phase one. So, um, I mean, we're, we're flirting with it. So it's, you can't get the same. First thing we, we do more than most cities and on top of that, you can't do the same amount. In a city when you're closed and in a crisis and, you know, 30 people could retire, 21 are being hired. So I appreciate you understanding that. We did, we did identify a few projects that, not much really. We've actually done a really bang up job, but we have identified a few projects that it's just not going to work. And, uh, this year, and that is one of them. And, um, we did look at the CIP list and I don't know, Jeff, that most of them are street if we want to, um, you know, point them out as we go through this, but. I understand, I appreciate your understanding because it's, you can't just do the same thing. So. The streets will make it till next year. So we're looking at what. There's only, I think, two to find, I expressed this, two to three or four things that were just pushed next year that are just not possible. Um, so, yeah, and this is one.
Very good. Councilor Heims.
Yeah, I'm definitely supportive of, uh, deferring this to 2022. And I guess to follow on to the mayor's words called, as we go along, if you could identify some of those things. Or identify them as we go, I, I think it would really help. Uh. I, I know, um, from my own perspective, it's, uh, frustrating to see all this stuff going on, but. We can't jump in and do the work, obviously, okay? But we can at least agree on how here's what we're going to do to try to contain the work. So, uh, I, I would, uh. Agree with the mayor called, uh, let's point those out as we go along and, uh, I'm sure we'll be supportive.
Yeah, absolutely. I will.
I'm going to point out two things just out there, but just so you know, um, the judge's contract at the end, end. Is ends at the end of December. So, you know, we don't want to be, we want to have time to get the right judge. So we're not going to wait till three months before that to reevaluate that. So, you know, that's just something so you all know. Um, Daniel's, uh, we're, we're, we're talking with Daniel, our attorney firm, to do a three-year more lease, a three-year more contract. That actually comes up, I believe, this July with our attorney firm. So we're talking about a, a three-year lease. Which basically what it does is it makes it so a council that comes in, isn't deciding on the contract right away. It lets them be in here a little while. I don't know what it was, three months or six months before, you know, they tried to do drastic. So. Again, um, those are things, we're just, you know, we're, we want to communicate with you everything we can.
Very good. Councilor Abersold.
Wait, can, and maybe Camille has a follow-up on that. I didn't mean to talk about personnel, but I think they want to know that.
I did not have a follow-up. I'm sorry. I have to leave to another meeting. So I was just saying goodbye to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Camille. Appreciate it. Councilor Abersold.
Yeah, uh, about the judge thing, I thought we just hired him. When did, I mean, how long is his contract for?
He came on right when I came on in 18. He, he was, he was, uh. The, the before, before you and my, you know, a lot of us came on, uh. He was hired two to three months before that. So he was hired, I believe, October, November of 17.
Thought I remember going through an interview process with some judge.
It wasn't, he was already picked before we came on. Um, or maybe, I, I could be wrong. Maybe we picked him right when he came on. I, I can't, it was right around that time though.
We picked, we picked him.
Okay. Okay. So it was right at the beginning of 18.
So how long is his contract? How long does he, are they every three years or something or?
It, it's up in, so 18, 19, 20, 24 year contract.
It's, uh, I believe it's at the discretion of the, of the council is what the duration of a contract would be for a judge.
But we're not, we're not tied into him for any amount of time.
Um, we are till December.
Well, uh, this, this fiscal year, yes, but anyway.
Right.
We'll get to that one later. All right, I'm, uh, page 28. On Street Parking Food Development.
Yes. That one's not on track. I apologize. There's not enough there, but it's because of, uh, staff, uh, shortfall.
Okay. So then would that be a move to 2022?
Uh, or the very end of 21, yes.
Councilor Franch.
Yeah, you know, thi- this was mainly, this, this is something that I brought up two years ago. And, you know, last year it didn't get done. I mean, it was, this, this is mo- mostly was in Kelly was the one that, uh, Mr. Busey was the one that was supposed to be. Uh, putting this language together. So, um, I know that he needed to get some information from Public Works, but. Uh, you know, I don't know why this one's falling off. I, this, this seems like the majority of this war is coming out of the police department.
Well, it, it actually affects, uh, the public work standards in some ways and also, uh, community development. And I apologize if Katrina's not here. Brighter input, but, uh, had some. Interaction with community development also.
Not, wouldn't you say that the largest, that, that Chief Busey was the lead on this?
In terms of enforcement, yes, but there was more to it. There was a lot of, uh. Infrastructure that had to be either set up in place or outlined so that, uh, the enforcement part could be, could take place. So there's code. That Chief Busey was going to help support. And, uh, and then there's infrastructure that Public Works was going to work with and community development. So it was, uh. All three departments had to work together, but yes, it would be enforced by police department.
Well, I, I guess, uh, I won't take up the council's time today on this, but. Uh, I'll take up some of your time and some of Chief Busey's time here real shortly about this because. Even last summer, the side streets were becoming a problem. And once Antichute Park gets fully operational. The neighborhood streets here, we're going to have a hell of a time. So.
Yes, and we, we've heard about it from downtown residents and Gig Harbor North residents and all, all around for a lot of reasons.
Very good. I saw, okay, we're good. Let's go to page 29, Street Division Capital. These are. First, uh, three are in play as we all know. And. Councilmember Franch. House Member Branch.
So what Stinson Avenue pavement overlay, we're gonna be over budget on that?
I think it's because the contract uh, was awarded to be over budget. Um, because it was the contract for the contractor plus the construction services plus the materials testing and the changeover authority all went over budget. That's why it's noted as over budget.
Right, so when we pass that, when we, the council, I heard this several months ago with that new amount, that's what this reflects. There's not something in addition to what we talked about two or three months ago.
Right, that's that's absolutely right. And I, and it does say percent complete as of three thirty-one. Don't forget the contractor was out there for only a week before they uh, before we put this out. Uh, if you were to ask me what the percent complete would be uh, starting tomorrow, it'd be ninety percent. So uh, just, there's a lot of things I'd like to give credit for for our staff on things. This is one of those projects. Um, working with Miles and the support from administration and council to do things a little different out of the box, but allowing the contractor to close that intersection and close the corridor has been a major uh, time saver for this project. And the citizens, I think, will be benefited greatly by that. Uh, right now, though there's rain tomorrow, so I can't say for sure, but right now, the contractor is likely going to be done. That corridor is gonna be open and the roundabout is gonna be operational by dusk tomorrow. So there's gonna be more work that has to be done. There's uh, there's, there's ten percent of the work. There's gonna be lane interruptions still. There's uh, like I said, RFBs need to go in, streetlights need to go in, striping needs to go in. Uh, the uh, striping in certain areas that uh, is plastic striping that needs to go in. So uh, and pressure washing cleanup and minor improvements, but for the most part, the corridors can be open starting this weekend.
I I'm assuming number three and four were objectives met under budget, same thing. It's it's not, it's what we approved at the council meeting whenever it was?
Yes, well, number three is part of that same con, uh, I, objective two and three are the same contract, just two separate projects. Um, and then four is what we've talked about uh, being over budget. But there's been nothing awarded for the construction of Stinson Harbor.
I I want to recognize Councilor Woo and then Councilor Rodenberg.
Yes, I'm grateful that uh, the Public Works is going, Operations Center is going forward. So so thanks, everybody who's been working on that and a, and another thank you for everybody who's been working on Stinson. I agree with you, Jeff, that uh, our citizens are going to be really happy to be on that street again. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Rodenberg.
Yeah, I just had a question for Director Langham. Uh, the street lights on the roundabout in Stinson uh, overlay, it, those are long lead items. Are those gonna be on time? And those were way out, I think.
Yes, those those typically are way out. Um, it, the contractor technically has per the contract and to to get everything done, physical completion by um, I think it was a one hundred day contract, so one hundred working days. So you're talking August timeframe. So they're still on track for that. But uh, it, there'll be, all of a sudden, next week, you'll see a little bit more activity and then there'll be a sparse amount of activity, if no activity for many weeks, and then all of a sudden, the RFBs and the streetlights will show up and you'll say, oh, one of those show. And they are.
Very good. Thank you. All right, let's go to page thirty. And these look uh, the exception of uh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff. You can cover these.
Well, yeah, I I don't wanna talk on all of them, especially if there are questions, but I just wanted to say this thirty-eighth Avenue is another win that we've had success on. Um, if you've been out there lately, you'll see contractors out there. Those are utility contractors, lo- relocating their utilities. Um, we're out to bid right now with this project. Uh, we don't know what the estimates are, or what the bids are gonna come back as, but we are anticipating they're gonna come in right at budget. Uh, so we uh, we are getting this on the, in front of the council for award at the May twenty-fourth council meeting. So that's gonna be a success for us.
Thank you. This might be a good time as any. I just wanna thank the council. Uh, Jeff obviously put a lot of work into it, but all those uh, applications we put in through Dale Learn to the feds. Uh, I haven't heard anything back. It's just kind of surprising given that I thought they'd be pretty much quick turnaround. But uh, we appreciate all the, all the efforts of council to support those as well as Mayor Kuhn. I think we got a great package of uh, potential projects. I I hope they may perhaps to be successful with even one of those. I think they're all well-written and uh, they're, they're all great attributes, but again, appreciate all the effort. All right, let's go to page thirty-one. Any comments there? Questions? Right?
I'll I'll just shout out another win here. So we still are on track, as I said, with those pedestrian crosswalk improvements on Gigg Harbor North. We we've heard loud and clear from Public Works Committee in the council, this is a high priority. And like I said, Trent already ordered the uh, RFBs for that project. So hopefully, even with the long lead time, those will be in and ready to go.
Thank you, Jeff. House Member Markley.
Uh, yes, thank you. I just was wondering about number ten, what the holdup was for for that crosswalk to go across to uh, for greater access to Veteran Memorial Park.
Sure, that that is a staffing issue. Um, we we can get the design out. Uh, maybe we could, that's one of those projects if uh, council is looking to have that one move forward. We can work with our consultant to start on that project as soon as they finish the pedestrian crosswalks improvement for Gigg Harbor North, number nine. But it's just been a staffing issue. We were planning on doing that in-house design and in-house construction, but um, it's, it's gonna have to probably both be uh, out of or out for consultant design and Public Works committee.
Yeah, I know Gigg Harbor North, that's awesome that that's going forward. That's a, just a massive need, lots more people in that area than in, than in, on Fiftieth. I just have had a couple people ask about the one on Fiftieth, cause now that the new place structure is in, people are getting drawn to that park more. And so just wondered about that one. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Kuhn and then Councilor Woo and then uh, go ahead.
Yeah, and Jeff, you can fill in on this too. We, you know, I I don't want people to think we're skipping this over. Uh, Katrina is working with OPG to, you know, work, you know, the the shopping center up there, you know, that we, we had gotten like a six-month um, extension. And that is an old development agreement that we're trying to work through. Um, but the, it has not been forgotten and that has been a priority of ours to get that figured out for them. Is that, do you have anything further, Jeff? I just want, I want you to know that we're not, there's a lot of things here that are being worked on that are um, are not on here that we're working on.
Still progressing.
Very good. Councilor Woo.
Yes, the Prentice Street, uh, getting things ready to apply for a grant next year. And I noticed that it's uh, from the school to Fenmore Street. Um, but I'm wondering, is it possible to include all Prentice? Because when you go from the school down to Burnham, it's really bumpy and and there's been a lot of houses there and there's a lot of patching. And I I've been surprised at how bumpy that street was when I took a ride on it.
Well, yeah, I, maybe that's something that uh, as as we embark on that, we can, and again, we're just putting together conceptual design for uh, grant application. Uh, maybe that's a topic we can be discussed at Public Works Committee or uh, some other way. But yeah, I, as far as putting together conceptual design, it might exceed the budget slightly if we were to extend the limits. But um, that's something that can be discussed as we proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. I'm on to page thirty-two. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I I just a quick question. Originally, that was the the Prentice uh, street thing. And I thought that was a two hundred fifteen thousand was going toward the Borgan project. Now it appears as a separate project and the Borgan thing is back on page thirty-one. Do we have a double count here or am I just going crazy?
No, I think that during the budget process, and I don't know if it was, I thought this various crosswalks and sidewalk installations was also in the twenty uh, twenty twenty budget. So I thought it was developed in twenty nineteen as part of the twenty twenty budget process.
It was.
Very end, yeah. So um, it it was carried over into the twenty twenty-one, just like this.
Okay, so 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 this really is a double count?
It was two separate, two separate.
Okay, well, then what is the, where are these other crosswalks and sidewalk installations going?
Well, that that was supposed to be left up to City Council and possibly the Public Works Committee to identify where they would go, whether that was uh, as as you said, Councilmember Hines, the Prentice or Vern Hardson or, I mean, discussions have been on, maybe we look at Peacock Hill extension up towards uh, Borgan Boulevard. So um, that was just left at open to discussion.
Okay, so since we haven't discussed any of that yet, and the one that's really important is the stuff up on Borgan. That's the stuff that's really near and dear to our heart. Uh, I agree with the uh, deferral to two thousand twenty-two, I assume on this thing. You've got a no up there on containing twenty-one. I'm in agreement, right?
Okay.
Very good. Month, page thirty-three, the motel tax, uh, page thirty-four and I believe page thirty-five. Or is indicated that these are all, all on track, as you can see the various percentages there for each of these items. Give a moment for everybody to look at that. Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Uh, I I guess I'm just curious and I I see it here on page, bottom of page thirty-four, forty-seven. Update the art, update the catalog of city-owned art. Molly, was that, is it Mike on track with that? And it's with the Arts Commission.
Well, it is uh, from the Arts Commission standpoint, but I understand LTAC wanted to maybe include art outside city limits. So maybe that's what this is.
Well, we left it up to them. So we, we told them we wanted to include not just, yeah, I mean, actually, I think that was council. I think council initiated, maybe even Councilman Dinson, you know, uh, art right outside the city limit. So we told them. So it's still in, it's in there, it's it's on their to-do list, not, not staff.
And by the way, good catch. I I missed that one. I appreciate the, yeah, seeing that one. All right. Let's go on to page thirty-six, Public Arts. Some questions on those.
If people don't know, the the honorary piece is um, in our city. It's not down with artists towards the ocean. It is on, it is now on um, in our city, being stored until we do it. So I just wanted people to know that.
Very good. I'm gonna go to the next section, which is uh, page thirty-seven, park development. Oh, we got it here again. Any questions on any of these items? Page thirty-eight.
Oh, oh, sorry, takes me a while.
Go ahead.
So uh, phase one B, is anything gonna be done on this in twenty-one?
I I can't say for sure right now. Um, I would like to say that we will get a consultant on board and get them under design. Um, I think that that's critical to keep it on its path to be in construction next year. We have to get that moving soon. I have very much wanted to wait until we get a parks manager to do that, but uh, we'll see.
Okay, okay. And we don't think we're getting any money from the state or feds at all on this.
Uh, that's not true. We are, it passed in the state's budget is that five hundred thousand dollar RCO Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. So we will be, we need to enter into an agreement with RCO on that.
We have to wait? When will we do that? What's the timing on that? Do we wait until we have a designer?
No, they will uh, likely uh, send us over the grant agreement paperwork uh, before the end of June.
Oh, thank you.
And I do wanna say, I mean, we just found out about this a week ago. I mean, I just found out about this two days ago. So I believe Jeff worked on this or someone did in October and just a week ago, we found out we were getting a five hundred thousand dollar grant. That's a big deal.
Very good. Councilmember Branch and then Councilor Rodenberg.
You are muted, Councilmember Branch.
On uh, page thirty-seven, number three.
Yes.
I thought we were holding off on that until we did the visioning.
Yeah, this is uh, part of the, well, yes, we are. We're gonna, we're not gonna be constructing the building or designing it. We're going to be doing the visioning, which I guess is under the um, Crescent Creek Park Visioning. So that might have been my mistake to say that we're on track.
Okay, so that that would be, okay, that'd be a no.
That would be a no, yeah. Sorry about that.
Great. Councilor Rodenberg.
I apologize. Are we on page thirty-eight?
Um, no, we we were just uh, just still on page thirty-seven.
Okay. My comment is page thirty-eight when you get there.
Okay, we can go to page thirty-eight. Go ahead.
Uh, on the Scancy Net Chad Structural Repairs, uh, the siding and painting and the re-roof. Uh, why do we need a design? What gets designed there?
Uh, it is the building permits that need to be submitted for the design. Um, we need a building permit for the re-roofing. We need a building permit for uh, a few of the minor structural repairs that were being proposed. It's not much of a design package. It's more of a bid package to put it out to bid for a con, for Public Works contract, so.
Okay, and we need to hire a consultant for that?
Yes, we 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 need to hire, we don't have structural engineers on staff.
Thank you.
How's your branch?
Yeah, well, you know, being on the board there, you know, this is the second year now. We've already gone through this winter with that roof leaking. We went through the meetings, uh, I forget the gentleman's name that we, we, do you remember that gentleman's name?
Larry Lindell.
Yeah, so, you know, I I don't see why we we can't get this one done. I mean, this is, this needs to get done. That's a city asset that's deteriorating with that roof leaking.
Uh, what we've talked with um, our operation staff about is to, if we cannot get this project out to bid this year, then we will have our operation staff at least find as many leaks as they can and patch them with new roofing materials to get us through the winter. Because we don't want that build to deteriorate.
Okay. Um, see, page uh, thirty-nine, relation of the park stuff.
Oh, maybe, I'm sorry, I go back real quick to page three. There, I just wanna uh, shout out to the win for the railway carriages and boat. Um, council's awarded that contract. Uh, it's in manufacturing right now. Uh, it's on track to be at the site in July. And then the volunteers at the boat shop will be uh, installing it on the low tide cycles that they have in July and August. So anyway, uh, very happy to see that over in 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 play.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. Thanks to Council Mayor and that might as well. All right, I'm gonna hit uh, go to page uh, thirty-nine, Councilor Branch.
Yeah, number ten there, what what's uh, we're not, it seems like that house rehabilitation, uh, I don't even know, I I lost track of counting how high that we are on that. So what, what, how much more under, over budget are we going to be?
Um, let me look at the council bill. There, it was, it was outlined in the council bill from last council meeting. Uh, it had, and page two had a summary of all finances for that.
So we'll get that for you, right?
Yeah.
Well.
It's, it's primarily the um, the additional chimney work is is gonna be costing us a little more, but it, but I can get that for you, Councilmember Branch.
Okay, page forty, you've been along. This is very good progress. Thank you. This is the water operating. Uh, Councilor Rodenberg, right? You're on mute, sir. You're unmuted, sir.
Is there a chance for a bio break?
Sure, I thought we, we hammer out the rest of these in a few quick minutes, but we can certainly take a break, yes. I'm okay with that. Since I'm the self there, I guess I can, I can say that and get away with it. How long a break, five minutes? Okay, all right, five minutes, we'll be back at five o'clock. Thank you. Okay, resuming on page forty, forty-seven, the water operating. Have any questions or comments about any of that? Okay. Waste water on page forty-one, capital. Any questions, comments? Councilmember French. You're muted, Jim.
On number one and number two, Jeff, can you tell me what, how much over budget these are going to be?
Can't say for number one, because that is now going to, that money's now going to be reallocated to the Harborview Stints and Gravity Sewer. And we don't have that designed far enough along to give you an estimate. But number two, I could ask for engineering to provide that estimate right now for the Station Twelve, because if designed at ninety percent, we've got a good construction cost estimate. So I can provide that.
Okay. Page forty-two. Continuation, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, just administrative by number five, replacement of station number six. It's not on track for two thousand twenty-one, per the note down below. Completion in April two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We'll make that correction. Thank you very much.
Which is, which is correct?
Twenty-one.
I know, I, it's, it's not on track for twenty-twenty, if I understand, and the Ryan, number five, that'll be completed in twenty twenty-two, correct, Jeff?
Correct. It, it's now, it's now going to be, it looks like it's made completed in twenty twenty-two, so.
We, we will make that adjustment. All right, anything else? Page forty-three, that's one item, Dinson Slip Linings.
Now, since the slip lining, it says it's on track to be completed in twenty twenty-one. Just between the time this was generated at the end of March and now, we're looking at taking both this slip lining project and the storm slip lining project, which we're getting to next, and moving those into twenty twenty-two because of staffing limitations.
So again, this was, this was trying to just do what we had to. And this, we felt that this could wait till twenty twenty-two.
Very good. I'm on to page forty-four, Stormwater Division Operating, Councilmember French.
Yeah, so the sewer slip lining. It's, we've got a longitudinal crack. I mean, are we seeping sewage, or is it just a hairline crack? Or I, I mean, what's, what's the magnitude?
It's the opposite of seeping sewage. It's seeping groundwater into the sewer system. And it's, it's not to the extent that Darryl feels like we need to proceed with this. It's just something where we need, it's on our list of things to do, and we need to get it done.
So we're getting some infiltration into the pipe, and it's obviously causing issues because you're putting clean water into it. Yeah. All right.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, the crack, it doesn't go both ways?
Not if it's on the top of the pipe, no, or the sides, no. On a steep, it, it, as long as it's.
Yeah, 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 okay, that makes sense. It's on the top of the pipe, obviously, then, if that's the.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Again, page forty-four, Stormwater Division Operating, any questions about any of this? Okay, there's one, well, I guess, no, run, it's a continuation there for forty-four to forty-five, it's the same item. Then we're on to page forty-six, Stormwater Division Capital. As well as page forty-seven, I guess it's all part of the same division. Give you folks a moment, Mayor Kuhn.
Yeah, since we're towards the end, I did want to, you know, we, we have our seat lists. Nothing holds up well. There it goes. Anyway, CIP, so, that we've shown, so yeah, so really, there's, there's a couple other minor projects that we, we, the slip lining we moved. The, the pavement we moved, we're not moving the utility rate, we're not moving the storm, rate, the, two other things that we were proposing to. Well, we had native vegetation planting, so we had ten thousand dollars. And instead of, we, what we were going to do to make it, because it still takes just designing of that, we were going to enhance existing sites. That's what we decided that was best, so we could, so we could still do the net of it, native vegetation planting. Instead of pay a consultant to figure all that out, which we don't have the extra time, we were going to enhance existing sites that we already have, for that, and then we could get it done. Any questions on that? Markley, you look like you have a question, you're, okay. The other thing is.
What, what, what page are you looking at with this native tree planting?
It was on our CIP project schedule.
Okay, so it's not on any, it's not on any of this.
I thought it was. Let me see if I can find it real quick while you, while you're talking.
The other thing is, we have a pros plan update. And we were gonna, we were gonna go out with a consultant on that, so we could still get it done. Because of staffing time, so just, you know, that's, that's it. As far as being, you know, letting you know, unless you want to push it off, but it's, I think, what is the, what is again, the pros?
Sure, yeah, Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. Right now, we were anticipating if we had a Parks Manager that we could, have the Parks Commission, the Parks Manager do that, but I will have a much better idea by June if we think, we're, we're going to anticipate and start to gather, a scope and fee from a consultant to do that work, but if, if we get to a point where we have a Parks Manager and the Parks Manager comes on board and determines that, that that person and the Parks Commission can complete the pros plan update, then we will continue on that path. Now, I, I hope that maybe the RCO would allow us to defer the submission of that pros plan update. It's due March of twenty twenty-two. However, in reaching out to RCO, they said, no, they could maybe defer it a month or so, but not more than just a little bit of time.
Okay, so, did we, the marine outfalls maintenance?
Yes, that was part of Stormwater.
Okay, okay.
And I, I just wanted to mention, I found the native vegetation plantings, it is in the Q-one objectives, it's on page thirty-eight of forty-seven. It is number five, native vegetation plantings, and that's on track and on budget.
So again, we're, you know, we're, it's just the first quarter, and we're a year plus into, into being closed. And so we're, I think, I think we're doing a pretty bang-up job, and if you feel that we're, you want something else pushed instead of what we're pushing, please let us know. But we've tried to bring this to you with, you know, really educated, discussions of, you know, what, what we really can push that won't be detrimental to the city and isn't, so.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, on page forty-seven of forty-seven, that was somewhat lost somewhere between forty-six and forty-seven. The emergency water intertime, Canterwood Boulevard?
Yes.
That one, I, I guess I don't understand. If we're only ten percent of the way there, and we don't have a consultant on board yet, I don't see how this thing's going to be done in two thousand twenty-one. Or how he's going to spend four hundred and forty thousand dollars on a consultant.
No, it's for design and construction. It says to install emergency water.
And construction.
Design and construction, yeah.
I guess even more so, I, I question, we don't have a design yet. It sounds like we don't.
No, we have a survey and are, actually, we have a, we have a, our consultant working on this one now. We have a survey and they're, trying to get this design completed by, I, actually, let me see, let me see, I've got that here in front of me.
Is this, is this Josh Gilchrist?
Uh, no, he's, he's me, we're looking to have him do private development design, but, yeah.
Right, Councilmember French.
Yeah, on page forty-six. Number four.
Yes.
Were we that far, I mean, this, towards the bottom of that, it says this work will likely require a new fish pass. It is planned to be performed as part of the Burnham Half-With Roadway Improvements.
Correct.
Did, did we ever have a discussion about that? And I mean, whether or not?
Yes, as part of the discussion about the Burnham Half-With Roadway Improvements, the council, majority of councils supported having the projects go together, because remember, we had an option of moving the, separating the culvert replacement project from the half width, but then that would likely cost us more money. And the culvert still, because you would do the sidewalks and then temporarily patch sidewalks.
Yeah, 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 oh, okay, uh, I, I'm sorry, I don't know why I was thinking, somewhere did I, oh, that, that was just, the one above that was just the, the design for that in, in Austin, okay.
And that's being held off right now. And Councilmember Heinz, back to your question of the, I'm looking at my CIP list, of the emergency water intertime. Right now, that is advertised, or that is anticipated to be awarded in September and completed by end of December.
Okay.
So designed through August, essentially.
All right, thank you. So Jeff, on number four, I, I thought that the culvert was eight hundred and seventy-five or eight hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That was the cost of the construction, then you put in design permitting and it came up to one point three million. At the very last meeting on this project, or when we had the alternatives analysis, we separated out, the two projects completely to show design permitting and construction for each individual project, and that came up to the one point three million.
Boy, that must be one hell of a design.
There's a lot of permitting involved, there's wetlands involved, and anytime you, if you remember correctly, the, a good example is the Donkey Creek Daylighting, that construction project, I think, was in the, just a couple million dollars. And the design and permitting was almost as much as construction. So unfortunately, that, that's, for, for better or for worse, that's the price of doing these types of projects in critical areas.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, just a question for Director Langham, but did somebody suggest that there's fish as far up as Ninety-Sixth Avenue?
Yes, in that the, the state records show that, that, that it is possible for fish to get up that far, if they, if the culverts are replaced between the open water and that location, yes. I, I, at one point, if you'd like to look at those maps to see where they, how far the state feels that fish can get up, I'm sure Councilmember French would want to be involved in that conversation, but it's quite a ways further than most of us would think.
Thank you.
Well, I, I would be, it may, since in the, in the notion of time, I mean, is there any, you know, do we ever have, what, do we ever push back? I mean, just because some, somebody from the state tells us, well, we think this is going to happen. Do we ever say, I mean, involve some of our commercial fishing, the guys that know Donkey Creek intimately, and involve them in the conversation and say, hey, you guys are out to lunch?
We have not. I don't think it would help us in our cause. Essentially, if we don't accommodate for fish passageability in these culverts, they won't give us a permit. So we would have to take them to court to sue them to issue a permit, and I don't think that's the direction the city would want to go.
We, we've had this discussion previously, I believe, last year, but you'd be dismayed or amazed, or whatever, whatever term you want to use, about how the biologist determined whether or not it's a fish stream. And I don't want to go into any great detail tonight, but, yeah, it's.
Dismade would be the proper adjective. From my point of view.
But Jeff's, Jeff's comment is very apropos and very accurate. They have this out there and, and it's based on a fairly extensive lawsuit, between two federal government agencies that set the stage for it about ten years ago. And the state has to comply, and they have to make sure that local jurisdictions comply as well. Not only I, I certainly don't enjoy that, but it's, it's going to be at great cost. All right, I want to thank Mayor and Council participating as well as staff. I think this report was, again, excellent, and I certainly appreciate all the discussion and hope it was meaningful and beneficial to the council. Mayor Kuhn.
Uh, yeah, on a different note, I had sent you, I, you know, they, they probably didn't like it, but I copied all of you in email chain today with the commercial. Yeah, the commercial aviation. Again, they probably didn't like that, but they had a long meeting today for three and a half hours, and I couldn't get to it, but I kept, trying, but they, I did hear a speaker mention that was on the panel, that the proposed airports outside of Payne Field and Sea Tech were not going to increase, we're not going to increase, for solving the passenger airline needs. And she asked that to the, the group. Unless, unless you feel otherwise, and no one raised their hand or commented. So I just a minute ago asked David, Fluckerstein, was there more information? Because what happened is, they concluded their report, and then Pierce County opted us out. The sponsor of Tacoma Narrows Airport opted out after they concluded their report. So I kind of told David, hey, they never talked about it, you know, and this was last October. And he said, well, they concluded the report first, we'll, we'll let them know what Pierce County said after the first quarter, which is today's meeting. And he did say to me, we stated that Pierce County opted out of the commercial aviation operations, and that we believe the direction of the commission honors that request. So I think that's a big deal. I had said Fort Lewis opted out, Olympia opted out, so please honor that. So I just, I, I just printed it out, so I think it's important to keep that, and I want everyone to know that.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. So I'm, I'm quite aware of this, the workload of our staff. And I just want to give a really great big shout out to Director Langham. And because I know it's difficult work, and, and if there's anything, I'm sure that the council can help you with budget-wise or with item-wise, you know, I think we're willing to, lots of us are willing to help with that. And so thanks for all your effort, thanks to your team as they're working, and for, and for Director Knutson, and for everybody at the staff level who's, who's really overburdened. And, and you're doing a great job, so thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Woo. Yes, I, I, we all appreciate your support. We do feel it. You will be seeing a consultant services contract soon to help us do some private development reviews, since we've lost our associate engineer earlier in March, so you'll see that. And hopefully that'll help us bridge the gap until we can get that position filled.
Very good. Councilmember Markley.
Uh, thank you. I think Councilmember Woo said everything I was going to say. Just a big, big thank you, and we so appreciate you all and the work that you're doing. And I am, I am also supportive of anything council can do to reduce your workload or help with the current workload. Make sure twenty twenty-two isn't as burdensome as twenty twenty-one, you know, whatever we can do, just, you know, please be honest in letting us know what you need, and, and I might, I, I'd like to honor what you need and not overburden, not continue to keep, keep you all overburdened. If we can take some of that weight off, then I think we would like to do that. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
As, as you know, it was, it was council that asked to have this quarterly budget status report done every quarter. And I have to say that it was really done well, so thank you to Josh Decker. But it, it really is helpful. I think now this council is probably more aware of up to the minute where these priority projects are. It's not just for our own knowledge, but we get asked throughout the community, all of us do, you know, where is this, what's going to happen here? So this has really been helpful, and I, I know it was another. So this has really been helpful, and I, I know it was uh another, something else for staff to do, but I really truly believe it was beneficial, so thank you.
Welcome, thank you. Very good, with that, I'm going to turn it back to uh Mayor Keon to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thank you, uh, appreciate all, I, again, as Councilmember Rodenberg said, it's, it's, you're getting all the information and it's very, very current and uh it's a lot, it's a lot of information and I'm I'm proud of our staff too, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A great evening.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you, have a great evening, evening, great weekend, take care.